I think part of the discussion here. My decisions here, given recent information about this.
Yeah, we can do that.
Been there for four years.
I've been for longer than that.
Should have had that.
It's not bad. They last forever.
Frank was here.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please join me in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would you please take roll?
Councilman Madsen. Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Kaufman.
Here.
Councilman Allison.
Present.
Mayor Graves.
Here. You have before you an agenda and we need to, is it C2, Candy?
Correct.
We need to strike C2. And then I would entertain a motion to approve. Are there any other changes, Candy?
No other changes.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion will carry. The first item up for discussion is the 16th Street reconstruction project concurrence on award.
So in your package you have information that was provided from YDOT. Him and Barker both here for the project. They're needing concurrence from the council. Wrote a letter to proceed, but they are both here to answer your questions on the project. I'm going to let them talk a little bit, tell you about what they came up with, and then I'll tell you about where we're at on money. What's left?
Well, in your package you have the pre-award bid results. And basically it shows the engineer's estimate of 12.2 million and off the dollar construction. Their bid was 10.7 million. The engineer's estimate is a estimate that they do right before the bid letting, trying to reflect the cost trends and everything that we've seen compared to our agreements. Our project agreements, the Crip agreement or the yeah, the agreement for the street work and agreement for the water work, they're relatively close. I think there's, the estimated construction costs are just a little higher within a, you know, a few percent. And so honestly, it's pretty close to what we were anticipating from our agreements that were refreshed in July. And so I would trust that we would be ready to move forward with it. Here to answer any questions you might have about the bids or the process. I'll go on about the process a little bit. We opened the bids last Thursday. And you see those reflected there. We'll get concurrence from you guys probably by tomorrow sometime. And there's a highway commission meeting on Thursday and they will award the project. And from there, the contract will, the contractor will have to get all their bonding and insurance in order and then they will execute the contract here with them. Would you say, Tim, that usually takes them up or something? Maybe?
So we have had a few. So there's a piece of property along 16th Street where we haven't been able to get an easement due to a lot of deaths in the family. I don't know how else to put it. But so Brian Arterie and Tony Weaver have been working on that. So at this point, right now, the pathway is not included in these numbers. YDOT took it out because we didn't have those easements, that easement into place. But we, it can, once that gets settled and we get all that paperwork done, it can be added back into the project. But right now that pathway is not included in these.
Right, and that pathway will, perspective, it's proposed to be funded with a TAP program where it's funded through that, but with a 10% match from the town. And so those numbers aren't included in there that if we get the opportunity, we'd like to add back in.
Yep, we would like to add that back in, but we do have grants for that, but there is the 10% match.
And the keepers just went dark on us. We were talking to them and then sent everything to Utah. Just went dark.
That's that kind of vacant property.
That one gray house across the street there in between Taco Pizza and there, it's just, it's been there forever. Nobody's lived in it since pre-power plant days, I think.
And Brian was working on a determination of airship or something like that. So we're still working on it. We hope to get it complete and added back into the project. But a lot of our grant funding was due to, I really made a big deal of that it was going to increase the safety along 16th Street. So if we don't have a pathway there, we do have a section where there's no sidewalk. So we're going to have to add in sidewalk. But if we can get the pathway in there, that's what we want. If not, we might have to just do sidewalk along there. But we've got to have something to get, to put traffic off the street.
Are you tired of me walking from throughards now?
Let me know so I can make sure I get there.
Murray'd love you.
So and then on money, so a couple different scenarios, but it looks like right now we're about $2,078,304 short. That's our funding gap is $2,078,000. So Tabitha and I spent some time today looking at different options and different things. One option is to put in, is instead of using portion of this six penny money on electric upgrades, we put that towards 16th Street. We have some money in the general fund that we could put towards that. But it's definitely, we're short $2 million.
Is that including what Gordon took back from us?
I've taken that out. So that's the amendment I took out because I'm still working with them that possibly that money may come back. But I did take it out as of right now. So if, if that came back, then we're short $1,005,000 approximately. But, so we lost some money. I don't know if all of you remember. They wanted the project to be bid by October 31st, I think is what it was. And we weren't ready to go to bid by then. And so the governor took our money away. So we're still fighting to get it back. We're not giving up yet.
Taking some of that money out of that electrical? Like taking some of that money out of that electrical project, how far back would that set?
It would, we'd probably have to move, move that base three Black Mountain project out a year. They've already started the engineering on it, but we'd probably have to go move out a year. It would definitely affect us. You know, because we're really trying to stay up on those electric projects. And I can continue to look for other funding sources. We could possibly go to the state, look at, you know, their low interest loans they have through this live office. But it's hard, you can't generally get a grant which some, when something's already been bid and awarded and everything. You know, it's, can't really get grants then unless, you know, governor's office, live office comes up with something, but that ship's kind of sailed on. We can find other sources. But anyway. That's the bad news.
So I'm trying to, just to know numbers, I mean, in lieu of now, it's this much over the whole. If we would say no, what is the engineering cost or is there no saying no?
I think we can say no, but I think the deal with YDOT was that we would have to pay anything they have spent of the Crip, by million of the Crip funds, we would have to pay it 100% back. But I don't know what that dollar amount is.
Well, I think just looking at our, our agreements, you know, we've expended $1 million in preliminary engineering already on, on the street project. So that doesn't count what, and we didn't put anything in on the preliminary engineering on that, on the sewer line. So we're in that million dollar range is where we're at with costs plus whatever little we added for, for bidding and advertising and all that.
And you can't use any of your grants for that?
No.
It's like you can't use any grants for the $2 million we're overrun and kind of impact.
We have in our severance account. I was trying to be all organized. In our severance fund, we've got 970,000, almost 971. You know, there's money in general fund, but we got to keep, you know, about three months worth of funds in there. So, and this project would go about a year. Is that what you guys are thinking? A year of construction?
Well, yeah, so we'll, we'll use up this next summer for the construction season with, but we're anticipating late, working late into the year. So the final wear and course will be put on probably next spring. Not, not this coming spring, but the spring after, the spring of '26. But we've required all the work other than that to be done by October 31st. Yep.
It's a, it's a kind of like a pay as you go thing, correct?
It is. As, as, as we start construction, you know, the contractor, Tim will do a estimate, monthly estimate and, and pay them for the work that they've got completed or the materials they've purchased. And, and we'll, we'll make a monthly payment to the contractor and they'll turn around and when we pay that, we will bill the town for, for their portion.
We have different options out there, but it definitely will be tight.
Tim, how much do you anticipate they'll bill for mobilization before June 30th?
Probably half. So it'll probably be upwards of mobilization, probably a half million just from O.
Yeah.
So that'll be an issue.
That'll be in this budget.
And I think we budgeted $500,000, but we've spent some of that on engineering.
Well, what's the thoughts on concurrence? I hear a motion. Here, forced.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'll be the bad guy. Make a motion, we award the.
Just concurrent, concur.
Concur, concur. Sorry. Thank you. 16th Street project.
With the award to, to Offdoe.
Thank you. With the award going to Offdoe Construction.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion will carry. Now, do you guys have a boilerplate letter for concurrence that I can just sign or?
We drafted one.
You're already, you're already done. Okay. Because I can just sign and give that to you tonight and then we don't have to worry about mail or anything like that.
She just says concurrent.
Hey, Tim.
That's what we need.
Hey, Tim, will you fulfill your engineering costs for 10 years?
Tonight, yeah, I can play that.
You have.
I do. Yep.
Every year we keep pushing it out, it's going to be more and more. Yeah.
It's ridiculous. And it's already scaled down.
Yeah.
A bunch.
Yeah, we reduced it from, it was supposed to go Swanson to South Street. We reduced it to Cedar.
Yep.
Then extended the lighting out.
Yep. We reduced the amount of street lighting. We reduced the amount of sidewalk that was pre-done.
And in this, in his bid, Ruar, this is.
We didn't do anything at Ruar.
They got to do their own, right?
We're just leaving it alone.
So the last storm drain will be at the longer path there.
And we weren't worried about the sidewalk there of Ruar because of the pathways on the other side. Hopefully that.
Hopefully that comes in.
Yeah.
So they won't have to move their lighting as they got out there.
Yeah, we just left it be.
I remember that discussion.
I did refresh.
Wow.
Yes, they just do whatever.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Are you done with this, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys can carry on.
Okay, thank you.
Now, in the essence of time, do you guys want to visit anything about the ladder truck information wise before the executive session so you don't have to hang out and come back? Or I mean, it's up to you guys. You can go hang out and come back or.
It could be four hours.
If there's any sort of just discussion that you would like to get out there before, you know, then you go. I'm just trying to save you guys from having to hang out. If you want, it's totally up to you.
I just want to add, add, or ask if anyone has any questions in the fire department regarding the communications that I've shared with you or the truck, if you have any questions or concerns. I'm just here to answer.
No, I was, well, I, you know, I trust your opinion, your judgment on this. I mean, like somebody had mentioned, I think it was Willie at the last workshop, you know, you're a wealth of information. We're lucky to have you.
Well, thank you, but the only thing that I would just add is that, you know, again, just like I said at the beginning of this, we're buying a used piece of apparatus. I went, I saw the truck, operated it right out of the shot, right out of the chute, and it all worked fine as expected. But it's a used piece of apparatus. I don't have a crystal ball, but I mean, you know, the last truck we had, we've had it for about eight years and, and we've had our share of problems with it. But it was still operational, you know, and so I would, I would certainly think that this truck would, would surpass that. You know, that's my hopes. Kind of sticking my neck out on it too, you know?
So what year is that, Pop?
It's a 2005.
And how much was it?
335.
And tires.
Yeah.
Certified.
Certified pump, certified ladder.
Automatic.
What's that?
Automatic.
Automatic. It'll, it'll already be lettered, you know, because, you know, trucks have lettering on them. Warranty. It has a 10-year, it has a 10-year powertrain warranty not to exceed $20,000. But that's, you know, the, when I talked with him, he said, he said, you know, if it were 21,000, we can have conversations, you know, like that. But they, they put, they put a money figure on it because they've had people in the past that, you know, somebody had somebody's brother that maybe worked on transmissions and they, and they came in with a $40,000 estimate and this company that we're purchasing it from, John's Mid-America, they could get it done for 16 and they were like, well, you know, let's, let's see, we can get a little closer together here. They put it at 20,000, but it has 50,000 miles on it. I mean, it's got a Detroit engine. You know, the town Wheatland isn't going to wear out the engine or the EV 4000 transmission or, or the, the pump transfer case on that thing and then the use that we're going to put on it. I mean, those are pretty bulletproof pieces of equipment. So, and I mean, unless we just do something completely wrong to it. But I mean, in just in normal wear and tear, I don't think we could wear that out.
It was a chemical plant, you said, that has it?
They currently have it. It was, it was taken, it came from Perth Amboy, New Jersey. And, and they purchased a new truck apparently. And in the process of that, this Brinley Mountain purchased that truck and, or traded, you know, took it in for trade, whatever the case may be. They leased it to this chemical plant. Of course, that chemical plant understands that someone with a check that comes, then the truck goes away. And, and they'll lease another truck until their new truck gets there. So, but that's where it's, it's in service. It has equipment on it and it's in service. They're using it in their day-to-day, you know, needs. And the John's Mid-America works with Brinley Mountain often. A lot of those companies all shake hands together and work together. So they're just kind of waiting on, on the town of Wheatland to say, yes, we want it. And then they'll, they'll get the truck to their facility. And, and there are repairs that need to be made on it, some, some body repairs, those, and that's all included in the price. Those repairs will be done. The truck will come to us looking nice. It's going to be red. So some of the guys on the department are a little sad about that. But I don't think that the people at the town of Wheatland care what color it is if it's coming to their house. They just want it to come to their house.
Steel or aluminum?
It's an aluminum ladder. Yep. And it's a 95-foot platform. And so that means that we can put two people in that platform, lift them up to an elevation. Or we could get two people out of a structure or something and lift them down to the ground elevation, elevation. So a little bit better to use for rescue type purposes, safer working condition for firefighters and civilians. So.
So I just have the water turret that you were talking about.
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep. And I tested the operation of all those, those items and they, and they worked. Again, as I expected, they worked from the, from the ground and from the platform. So. Everything, I mean, everything just worked as expected on the truck. No, no missing lights and things like that. It has a pump. And we ran, it has electric valves on it because of the size of the pump compartment. And we ran all those electric valves. We ran the pump. Everything worked there. And, you know, it has a little wear and tear on it because there was a career department that had it, you know, originally. And so those guys drive around like this a lot in it. And so it has, you know, it has elbow marks in the doghouse, but that's not the end of the world.
So did the chemical plant use it? Modernly, not at all.
I would guess that they used it probably just about not at all, except in drill. Yeah, because those places, just like, you know, refineries and such, they all have fire departments, but they really rather not ever have to use them.
Yeah. Right.
They respond to medical emergencies. They're all EMTs and stuff like that. Maybe fall emergencies, but you know, they, they don't want to use the fire truck for fire in those facilities. So.
It's a bad thing.
Yeah.
You can totally up in it.
Yeah, everything we have on our, on, that was on our current truck will go right back on it. You know, it's, it's in the station right now. So it was, it was missing one ladder in the, in the ladder tunnel. And, but we left the ladders on our truck when we sent, sent it back there. So we'll just take the ladders out of our truck and put them into this truck. You know, it's kind of funny for NFPA, you have to have a certain amount of ground ladders. 36 foot, 24 foot, 14 foot, and you know, all this stuff. But if you've got the hydraulic thing goes up and down, nobody's going to use that. It's kind of like using a chainsaw or a handsaw. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. So any other questions? And yes, definitely all new tires all the way around. The tires were 2020. But you know, I said, whoa, here we are. It's 2025. They're almost, they're two thirds of their way through the, their, their life for NFPA. So.
And it will fit back in our door through our.
Yes, it'll take up the entire bay. But yeah, it's, it's actually shorter than the other one.
What's approximate value of all those new tires being put on it?
I bet it's $8,000 or something.
Is it two axles in the back?
Yes.
There's eight drive tires and two steers?
Yes.
Probably 12, 14.
It's a 485 steer.
Oh, probably 12 to 14,000 if they're brand new and of, you know, Bridgestone, Firestone, Michelin type quality. Yeah. Probably 12 to 14,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those 485s are expensive.
Very. 16, 18 hundred dollars a pop. Trust me, I got lots of them.
Hey.
It was angle.
Tim and Barker gone.
And like I said, it will have a current, it will have a current ladder certification before it leaves the facility. And it'll, that's also including one day of training from the factory that designed the truck and manufactured it. We're going to have a trainer from E1 come out to Wheatland and give the guys one day of training on the truck as it was designed to be operated. So that's a valuable thing. That's something that always goes with brand new apparatus, aerial apparatus for sure. But sometimes used apparatus, that's lost in the translation and I wanted that so that it wasn't, you know, it was somebody that, this is the way the factory designed this truck to operate and they can get that information firsthand. And two sets of manuals. So we'll have full sets of manuals for it also. Printed manuals.
Those were almost a thing of the past as well.
Yeah, because now when we get a new truck, we get a little box that says, congratulations on your purchase. And you open it up, it has two USB drives in it. Actually, it has three because there's one for the dealer, but yeah.
And what's the timeframe?
We haven't fully hammered that down. I would guess sometime in later January or February. And of course, when we drive it back, that'll be somewhat dependent on the, on the weather conditions. You know, we're not going to want to drive that thing back. It's, it's down around Springfield, Missouri is where, where we'll be picking it up at. And you know, they have some pretty significant ice storms in there. And you know, they have some pretty significant ice storms in that part of the country. I don't think you wanna go skidding across the highway in one of those. So, you know, we'll look for a, hopefully a warm weekend or something to go down and pick it up. And that's our intention. If the council approves this purchase is to send a, a group down to Springfield in one of the department vehicles and then we'll drive it back. So kind of a break in.
Sorry, I mean, you're interrupting. And then what happens with the prehistoric one?
They keep it down there. They.
Is there, is that trade-in built into that?
Yeah, they, they factored that in.
Okay.
They told me that essentially that truck would become like a Christmas tree or Christmas ornament hanger or a tree trimmer, something like that, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna actively try to resell it to a fire department because of the cost involved to uh, to put it back to operational standards.
Big flag hanger alongside the interstate.
Well, it might be that too. I mean, you know, the, the good thing is, is it was a forty-year-old truck, you know, this is a twenty-year-old truck, so hopefully, uh, hopefully we can get a good run out of it, out of the used truck.
And then you got one more unit in the inventory you like to sell?
Four, unit four.
Four. Not talking much, probably there though.
Well, it's hard to say. I mean, the thing's strong is it, it's a strong running truck. The chassis itself is real strong running. And so uh, it doesn't have deaf and it doesn't have computers, so there, there might be some people out there that really would lean towards it. The downside of it, it's a nineteen eighty-four also and uh, and it's a uh, a small tank, smallest tank. It's got five hundred gallons of water, so it's, that's right on the borderline of small for a pumper. For that, for that type of pumper, because it's gonna go to a volunteer department. Normally volunteers want more like a thousand gallons so we can spray more than, you know, work maybe, so.
Approximate idea of the value?
Five to ten. I mean, if we could get more than that, I think that'd be great, but I'm not saying it's not worth more than that. I'm just, you just see the, these older vehicles and, you know, people. I drove the thing last summer when we were at our fireworks stand and I was like, man, I like to own this truck just the way it drives. You know, it drives like a champ. But we should have gotten rid of it a few fire truck purchases ago probably and we, and we didn't do that. And we just are running out of room in the, in the hall. But we'll still have two city pumpers and then the ladder, which has a pump and a tank on it. So I mean, we have plenty of, we have, we have more capability than we have firefighters.
I'm like, I think you said before, it won't affect our I S L ratings, no. Which is good for the end users.
Yeah.
The number four goes out in the county on rescues and whatnot, right?
No, uh, number, we, number four's not even outfitted. It's stripped. Yeah, it doesn't have equipment on it. So.
Oh, but mothballed.
Yeah. Be good weed sprayer. That'd be a good fire engine, you know. Unfortunately, Ranchester went ahead with a different purchase and uh, because otherwise they would have been super interested in it.
But there's other Ranchesters probably too.
Absolutely, there are. Yep. I don't really have anything else unless you guys have another question.
No, I think that's a good refresher of everything and all the pluses and everything, so thank you.
So yeah, we'll let you guys go to the executive session, I guess.
Yeah, I was just trying to prevent you guys having to hang out and wait. I mean, we could.
I'm good with that.
Get the details now and.
Kevin made a big bowl of chili for dinner tonight, so.
Nice, Kevin.
Yeah.
Burger.
Who's replacing you?
Willie Degwin will be the chief. Kevin will be the assistant chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you. As for this truck, for the future of the department, it's a win-win. Because like Shane, myself, Bob, very few people can drive the current ladder truck because of the stick shit.
Yeah.
We're, we're fifty, I'm fifty-four. I'm not sure how old Shane is.
He's right there with you, pretty close.
People are gonna be leaving and you're not finding very many people can drive a manual vehicle anymore.
It's great as I said.
Sad to say that, but it is the future.
You're older than I thought.
It's close, Tony. It's closer.
Are you getting volunteers stepping up?
As of right now, no, but there's great incentives.
You know, since I've been on the department, I've seen and it just goes in ebb and flows. It, it, it's real cyclical. It just goes like that and it, all of a sudden you got a bunch of people and it seems like you have a bunch of interest and everything's good and then, and you turn around and, man, what happened? You know, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Volunteer.
Yep.
I wanna watch step up.
Well, I don't know. There's probably some, there's people out there again that wanna step up, but you know, the, the volunteer fire service isn't what it was when I started thirty years ago. It's significantly more just to get a basic certification. And uh, you know, my basic certification was far easier to reach than these guys have it now.
You guys don't have any other questions for me?
Yep. I can go eat chili.
Thank you.
Yep, one question. Make sure you make your reservations for the banquet. They all got invitations, so please email me.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Brown.
We haven't poisoned anyone yet, so.
Enjoy the chili.
Yeah.
There's always a yet.
See you, guys.
See ya.
Thank you.
I'm gonna vacate.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're to that. We're at that, we're at that point.
Need a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to leave this special meeting and go into executive session?
They moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Personal issues, I assume, or candies, notes?